It's called me in the grand secretary permission order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to 2022, everyone. I hope everybody had a nice New Years and that everybody has recovered from whatever festivities you got up to.
Sleep?
That's good, very good. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Motion to approve, motion in a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Approval of the bills.
Everything looked good to me, so I'll make a motion to approve paying the bills.
We have a motion in a second to approve paying the bills. It's a roll call, isn't it?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
And you did see the two bills from the LEC?
Financial reports.
Closing books went good. New Year. Start over.
Very good.
Yep.
Do we have a motion to approve financial reports?
A motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Treasurer's checks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the treasurer's checks. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, corrections to be made to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Year-end budget amendments.
Yeah, one question I heard, that emergency manager.
He hasn't bought any yet.
You need to have money over there. He needed to have that money in.
Yeah, it's carryover. Yep.
So which one am I looking at here?
Emergency manager.
Oh, that twenty-six thousand, yeah? Yeah, spent versus budget.
Well, the twenty-six thousand, that's just half of.
Yeah, yeah. But you're saying that the budget was a hundred and sixty-two and then he spent.
Yep. Cause he had some top radios and that's.
Oh, yeah. We budgeted for him under the premise that if we knew what we needed, we're still waiting for it.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a lot to look at on this budget sheet.
Yeah, there's a lot to do.
I can believe it. What's, what's B C revenue on the second page we were looking at here? On the, I'm looking at the.
Oh, okay. That is blue crabs.
Oh, okay, okay. So we actually ran over about four hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean it's, everything was pretty.
Any further questions on the year-end budget amendments? We get a motion to approve those. Motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of approving the year-end budget amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. First of the year business.
Can we just get going on? Can we just get going on? I guess I can start with the first one if that's okay.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion that the entire board meet on all matters pertaining to the various offices and undertakings unless authority is granted to an individual member of the commission to act for the board in that the county auditor is authorized to pay all regular bills such as monthly salaries, lights, heat, water, telephone, bills with discounts along with month lights, human services, and indirect cost bills when received.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve that motion, which I'm not gonna repeat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The second motion is pertaining to approval of payments of two thousand or more. Is that something that we want to keep at two thousand or after all this inflation is probably reasonable to up that a little bit?
I like the way you turned it off. It used to be a thousand, right?
Does the auditor have any, because we moved it because of the auditor. Did we move it because of the auditor or just because we thought it moved it?
No, we, we changed. I mean, it was, cause you, you couldn't really, no, no. Just as long as we follow this action.
Would be all right with it?
Yeah, does two thousand then sufficient?
I mean, you could, you could maybe, like, computers and things like that. I mean, it's.
Two thousand bucks to be a bag.
Yeah, it's either two thousand or plus. I mean, it's.
But then we usually more than.
Well, you do if it's over two thousand.
Yeah.
My thought on it was always that we've already approved the budget and if they're staying within the budget and they're purchasing something that was included in the budget, should we really be micromanaging down to that level of, you know, no, you can't spend anything more than two thousand dollars as well? It's already been approved once that the budget year incident, but that's just me.
I'm guessing the thought always was that we just wanted to have a check to make sure nobody buck wild and just say, oh, I'm gonna buy a four hundred computers or something and their budgets all of a sudden blow over.
Right.
It's quite an argument to get it to two thousand.
It did.
It's hard for years.
I remember, yeah.
I mean, I'd be fine with doing it a little higher just because the inflation number is, you know, if we went to twenty-five hundred or something.
Okay.
I just don't want to hand type people, so.
You want to make that a motion?
I'll make a motion that no county official employees should order equipment, supplies, or services of more than twenty-five hundred dollars or more without permission of the county commission except for emergency supplies that that department supervisor would even necessary to authorize.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a motion in a second to approve that and increase by five hundred dollars, the amount required. Before you have to come before the county commission. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next one is that Ramsey National Bank, Bremer Bank, Western Bank, all of those like the designated repositories for, depositors for Ramsey County. Okay. We have a motion in several seconds. This one's very popular. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. Next one is that the Ramsey County Treasurer be authorized to invest county funds as soon as available and to cash in investments when necessary. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. The last one is to set the amount of five thousand dollars for the county's fixed assets.
And that's the others like that?
That is first eight auditors. Yep.
That's a doctor, huh?
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. That wasn't too bad. Okay.
Okay, to start off, update on the U S Highway Two expansion project up east of town. I think most of you are seeing what I did there. When I talked to Ed, we talked about getting a meeting together with DOTs and whoever else and I did talk to Wyatt about that and he's gonna talk to the engineering firm and the gal is watching over the engineering firm and then our district here. Put a meeting together. I don't know when or whatever, but he had to see what their schedule were like first, so. Don't have a date set or a time set for that yet, but it's in order.
Do you have a name on that gal?
She doesn't want to send an email, so you.
She's from the state?
Yep.
Well, if we.
I think that we need.
Well, I was just gonna say, the only thing I want is if there's no movement that you see on this, you know, we're not hearing anything, we're not hearing anything, we're not hearing anything.
Right.
Let's bring this back up, what, in two, two months at the longest?
Oh, yeah, no, it'll probably be this month yet, but.
You know, but, but just so that this doesn't run away, because that sort of thing happens all the time. Oh, well, sorry, we were gonna do it, but now the timeline's so shot, we're just gonna have to do this project the way we're doing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there anybody at the state, from the state at that meeting in High Plains that night? Do you know?
The one that I missed? No, the Wyatt, I talked to Wyatt and he said that he.
He wasn't there. I didn't see him.
No, he said he had something going on with his kids.
He probably, if my ever not coming, he probably get line blocked or questions.
I don't recall seeing anybody from the state there at all.
Not, it's not our district, no. The gal who sent him the email was probably there, but I'm guessing she's kind of riding her, whatever the term is, over the engineering firm.
She's from this part, do you think?
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, I think the album is always, live with those guys face-to-face with Wyatt.
Yeah.
Anybody else that was very odd, but.
We don't, it's not gonna change.
Right.
We're not even gonna have a chance.
Right. We're gonna try to set it up for one of our meetings or?
Um, we could. I mean.
Well, we could probably have a special meeting to do it, because.
The last one made it to, we gotta fit the engineering schedule. That's the only thing that really would hinder it. If the engineering firm couldn't be here the day of our meeting.
No, yeah, I think whatever, whatever works for them, I mean, it's important enough. We're gonna have to just pull up that special meeting whenever they have time to make it work.
Right, we'll just advertise it or whatever as a meeting.
We can go on, all right with that, but. We got the engineering firm, we wanna make sure we have the state there too.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
They're the ones that are gonna make the calls.
Yeah. And I'll mention to Wyatt that maybe even somebody higher up than her, I mean, somebody that, you know.
Would it, would it be reasonable to invite some amount of representation from the city also to this hypothetical meeting as we set it up?
I did mention it to Mike, but I didn't say, tell him about this meeting yet. Draft start. So I could do that.
I think it'd be reasonable to at least have Mike there just because, I mean, they're gonna have, if, if, if they do go along with the, the concept of frontage roads and stuff, it's gonna be a question of who's gonna have long-term oversight on the frontage roads. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna have to have some discussion on that too because, I mean, yeah, there might be a deal where the county and the township might be able to get the state to kick in some money, but if they grow all the east, they're gonna have to take on some additional pavement, so it's happening.
I guess, not if.
It's gonna happen, so.
It's an absolute huge part of this thing.
Yeah, so they're gonna have to add at least a little bit of, I mean, they don't have as much skin in the game probably, but at some point they might.
Right.
It's good to have somebody there at the table with us.
Even for like future development or if the city expands that way, at least they're on the same page as everybody.
Well, yeah, cause I'm sure, you know, like when, I don't know exactly how that works, but if the city has design specs for how they wanna put in there, you know, for lining up the frontage roads and all that kind of stuff too, so I'm sure they'd like to see exactly what they plan on doing if they decide what they plan on with the frontage road.
They might want a sewer line or a water line or whatever, just talk a lot of.
It's good to have them at least have that discussion so they know what's going on.
Totally. Well, I guess just keep us informed on that and let's make sure that we don't end up behind the eight ball. Let's stay proactive, so. If we're not hearing anything, let us know and we can start being squeaky wheels.
Sure. One thing I will mention is typically the state will build the frontage roads, but they want somebody else to take over maintenance from that day on. So like.
That'd be reasonable.
Yeah. I mean, that, so that's something they're gonna want from, and they're gonna want the county to be the first option to take it over.
Getting them built is gonna be half the battle first.
Yeah, cause it'll be right away purchase and I mean, it's, it'll be a big project, but frontage roads up there.
And depending on how far they're gonna go too, you know.
Right. Yeah, there's some areas there won't, like there's a sewer area there, but they probably wouldn't put a frontage road through, you know.
It would be a good start anyway, for sure. So then you would, then you probably wouldn't have all those access points. You've got four access points, you're probably doubling down to two access points.
Yeah.
Like sales ring and then what are they using for sewer their own on?
Who?
Sales ring and all the other businesses along that. Or just, they have their own drain field?
I think so.
That be your guess?
Like, I know like the clubs, they have their own systems and Akron has their own systems.
That city sewer stops, it's.
Oh, yeah.
I think.
Right.
Cause I think they had to extend it when they put in the travel plaza out there because we're on city sewer up there.
You're on city sewer.
We'll need so. I believe so.
So it'll just be rural utilities and I don't know where, how far out they go.
And that was, that was part of the reason that we wanted to annex it at that point because then you could do city sewer versus then you would have a drain field and all that kind of stuff and that big system would have been a lot, so.
I'm sure the hospital, if that's their idea right there, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, that's all gonna have to be annexed and tied into the city, all their services, I'm sure, so.
If I remember right, when the contractor put that eight-frame wooden house up, he hooked up to somebody's system, so it must be something out there.
Interesting.
But I honestly don't know where that goes.
I'm glad that was for all of them.
Yeah.
And if you're not a lot of system, it's one that's gonna have to handle it too. The hospital would be a big deal.
That would be the city source, but yeah, of the sewer and water field, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think a good point to make to the engineering firm and the state is, you know, there's been developments since they did their survey and all their looking data collecting, so, you know, there's been changes since then.
Was their survey there three years ago?
Just this summer, really, you know.
Oh, but I'm looking, what has their survey? It goes three years. It's been a lot, you know, in the last three years out there. Well, the whole thing kind of started even back when we were pushing to put the turn lane in on a binding and then they decided, okay, let's look at the whole corridor and that's been, what, five years ago, they started at least looking at it with the intent that eventually when they did the rebuild, we're gonna do some changes. Well, so it's been a while since they've been working on it. I mean, it's been taking shape, but yeah. There's been a lot of development. Five years, most of them over five business, six business.
Probably about five years since you put that turn lane, you know.
It's, yeah, I would guess it's.
It was early, but it was right when I got on the commission.
Yeah, probably been selling five years.
Hard to believe it was.
No, turn lanes.
So I guess when I hear more about that, I'll let you know and I'll talk to the draft start about the same, having someone there too. Could be good. And I'll stay on top, but hopefully since Monday.
Yeah, I think it's a good move on our part to evolve and put the safety of everything.
Right. I think there will be a comment period for the government agencies yet also. This was a public comment period that ended just twenty-nine.
Blood warmer to be on that either.
Right, exactly, yes. For instance, the city didn't comment on this public comment period. You know what I'm saying? They're, we're waiting for their opportunity for the government agencies or whatever they're calling them, maintenance, something. Management presentation, management people.
And there's a webinar the thirteenth, is that correct?
Yep, webinar is the thirteenth at one o'clock. It's fairly short, so, less than an hour. Basically, they're just gonna go over what was talked about at the public input meetings. Let that go from there. I don't know if you, that was an email, I don't know if anybody's interested in getting in on that. I'll be sitting down. Okay, anything else on, how we keep running? Okay, last fall I had, I ordered three different culverts for county projects for next summer and we're using that, our county roads were using that plastic line. No culvert's plastic line, so they showed up the other day and the cost of those was ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. I have a motion.
Move to approve paying out.
How much do they run their culvert, that plastic extra?
They're about thirty percent more, but they last thirty percent longer also, so.
Did we get a second on that? Did I miss it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve paying for the culverts to the tune of ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. All those in favor signify by saying aye, or is this a roll call?
Roll call.
This is a roll call?
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Leipon?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Okay, and also we have a couple invoices that were over two thousand, K L J Engineering. One is for the thin lift overlay project for eleven thousand, eight fourteen forty-seven cents. And the other was for the bridge project for eight thousand, one sixty-seven and thirty cents for a total of nineteen thousand, nine eighty-one seventy-seven cents. And a motion to pay those.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to pay K L J for a couple of different things to the tune of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Leipon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
And also I ordered carbide cutting edges for our plowed trucks this time, not the motor, but the trucks. Three sets of those of cost. I didn't know what the freight was gonna be, so it's gonna be around forty-four hundred dollars.
So this is for all the trucks then?
Yep, there'll be a one set for each truck. They usually last about three years.
Cause they're carbon.
They're carbon, but we like to keep a set or two on that because it takes forever to get them on that table. Yeah.
Is that forty-four hundred just a measurement, Kevin, or is that?
It is, I don't know what the freight was.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for Kevin to order some carbide cutting edges. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
And a couple of other things, um, we gotta invoice to pay our local share of the bridge inspection, which is only like seven hundred and fifty dollars, but along with that, they send a sheet that we need to sign saying we use, we didn't use federal dollars for our match money and we have to explain where that money came from, so. There's a signature on there from the chairman and the auditor, so we need a motion for the chairman and the auditor to sign that.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to sign off on local share of the bridge inspection cost. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
And the last thing I have is, well, you probably read that newsletter that comes out for Association of Counties and see Aaron Burst got appointed as the new executive director. Just wanted to bring up Steel Natty and Startville May or something like that, but that's who got chosen. That's all I have left to go with on Paul.
Quick update on coming three of the bridge project, one for, um, three, we've got the P S E comments back from the state. We have those final plans stamped here the next couple of days, so that's still, will stay in the March opening and then bridge project, we have the draft environmental document on my desk for review and plans, so hopefully we'll keep that in the May opening. Once and those are scheduled.
Also put this on page three or something.
Both of those will be going to construction, could you?
So I got.
Thank you, Kevin.
Please get up.
We'll move on to unfinished business. We've got Ramsey County Planning Commission Board appointment.
Neither parties are interested in serving, so we put something out on Facebook page to try to draw some interest.
Okay. Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
To spread the word, in other words.
Yep. We'll put it on the, I think, if you have it on the website, if not, so.
Okay, well, we'll table that until the next meeting and hopefully get some people.
Cost quite a bit put in the paper.
Well, at this point, it does not really, it's a little bit of cost this morning.
Should do it.
It's up to you.
I believe it's in legal papers.
Yeah, well, and it's two positions.
Maybe why you have that in the legal paper?
Yeah.
I'd make that a motion that we advertise in the Douglas Lake Journal, second for those positions.
Okay, we have a motion in a second that we open, well, we pay the Douglas Lake Journal to advertise for these two board appointments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried.
Bush ain't the bush, it's low too.
Never hurts. Okay, well, if there's nothing else in unfinished business, we'll move on to new business, an approval of raffle permits.
Move to business.
Yeah.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion is carried. Visitors and delegations, man, first meeting of the year's kind of short one.
Same, it's gonna be the shortest A D M meeting we've ever had. I know, we could talk for maybe an hour here.
No visitors and delegations.
I don't know, will I go back out or not?
Then we'll go to portfolios and we'll start with Commissioner Brett.
Uh, not a whole lot to report. I talked to Sheriff Nelson yesterday and everything's, everything's fine. There's no catastrophes or emergencies going on and and he's still helping out with the administration of the L E C, helping out in that position and things are going smoothly there, so they've been busy.
Very good. Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, all up on the jail. State's let's go up to sixty-five prisoners now. We've been waiting three months and we didn't apply for eighty.
What do we go for, what do we?
We're at fifty.
That's good, we did get to sixty-five then, yeah.
Commissioner Brett told me this morning, we still have eight, we have ten to count.
Yeah. But it's a good fifteen in the law.
So, yeah, they're, they did go pretty well. We interviewed captain's position at four, they interviewed virtually in he was gonna offer to a guy from Arizona, a guy that lived in valleys, or Rapid City for a while. And his wife was applying for a head start job up here, so it's on a pretty promising, you could probably take it. They're dicker on money a little bit, but well, like, gonna be agreeable. But I haven't earned it. They got it. So things are better, yeah, pretty bit better, so. State seems to be pretty positive, what I've earned, so. I think it's going better there, see the real, yeah, so. Kind of what I got.
Very good, thank you. Very good, thank you, Mr. Bulk.
I have nothing to report, we have a match, partners committees, we need you next week.
Okay. Commissioner Leipon?
Uh, let's see, uh, not a whole lot, any housing for the, um, haven't met since I don't leave our last meeting, um, social services, we met, um, nothing too crazy to report there, um, just year-end stuff, uh, they did really well on their budget this year, uh, so we were able to fit in, trying to run first two or three vehicles, but finding vehicles just like for the sheriff's department or anybody was a brutal, they found them, but had me look far and wide, I think, Brown had talked about that previously, um, trying to think what else we've got. Go over to roundup, roundups today and tomorrow, I believe, so if we get out here early enough, we might even still have some eggs or something over there, so go over and grab some breakfast. Uh, looks like a pretty good presentation in the next couple of days, a lot of good information for the A community and just for anybody that's interested in, you know, for the A community, there's always presentations on horticulture and trees and gardening and all kinds of interesting stuff, so people go over and check that out, it's uh, I don't know if the time's in front of me, but nine to three or so, I think usually is what the time might be, free dinner, everyone that passes will check that out, but other than that, everything's going fairly smoothly.
And I think the last presentation today is at three o'clock with Darrell Richardson.
Yeah, he's always very, very good, so.
And, and then tomorrow is two o'clock.
Yeah.
And that is, uh, Martin, Randy Martinson from marketing.
He's always really good too.
Hey, risk management.
Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like a really good, uh, a really good, a lot of the speakers this year, and I think, if I remember correctly, Terry Berry, or Terry Breakwater is gonna be talking to him about the start of roundup and how they gotta go, and so that'd be kinda interesting too, because it's, what is it, twenty?
Forty years.
Forty years, forty years, I was thinking twenty-five or something, yeah, it's been forty years that this has been around, and boy, it's an invaluable resource for just, see, you know, giving yourself a little continuing education, because you only learn a little bit every year, so. Pretty much, yeah. Other than that, I think that's pretty much all I have at this point.
Very good, uh, I don't think I have anything to, to report, it's been very quiet since our last meeting in the courthouse. Um, the only thing that I have is more of an announcement, which is I'm not gonna be here next meeting. And, uh, not even gonna call in.
But where are you, where are you going?
Maui. Yeah. Yeah, so I've got better things to do, next meeting, I'll be here, so, uh. Very good, so hopefully, uh, Commissioner Leipon can take the reins.
All right.
And, uh, make sure that you go on the Wednesday after, Wednesday morning after, go to a coffee time for me too, because I'm not calling in for that either.
Make sure you thank you way back. I guess, I guess I'd like to say the shout out and a big thank you to Kevin and his crew for the roads after this last snowstorm over the Christmas holiday, that was, uh, we had a lot of snow and, uh, and no complaints, so. That was, must have been out there.
Very good. I was, I was gone and I came back, I was surprised that I even drove all the township roads back to go pick the dog up and stuff, and everything was nice and clean. Which, everything looked really good.
Now, you guys must have got out there, got after it, because it looked really good.
How you gonna start over?
That's the problem with snow.
It never ends.
But, but thank you guys. Job well done, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, is there anything else for the good of the order? And we are adjourned.